Good evening, welcome to Peoria City Council Meeting. Pardon me, for Tuesday, March 18th. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Edwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Karlot.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council liaison Jelenek.
Here.
Council liaison Pryor.
Here.
Thank you, the first item up, first of all, this is your chance, last chance to submit speaker request forms, they can be found in the lobby, please fill them out, submit them to the clerk, as she will call upon you at the appropriate time. The first item up is a presentation by Peoria Sunset Lions Club, Christmas for the troops.
Mayor, there we go. Thank you so much for putting me back on the agenda again. I'm doing kind of a late thank you, we waited until we got some pictures back, and we got some really fun things to show you tonight. We're hoping that what ordinarily would have probably been the setup for me to do next year at the start of the holiday season, we won't have to do, because it is 2014, and the boys and girls are supposed to come home, so. We've done a great job of partnering with the community over the last four years, and we're going to have to find a different cause, because we've got all the partnerships in place now. But, okay, there we go. We started out talking to you first, and partnering with the cities, and this is the day all the departments were represented and came together. Biggest year we've ever had for the city departments wanting to get involved, we delivered 13 boxes for departments that first day, and over the course of the next month, we delivered another eight boxes to city departments, so it was the largest participation ever for city departments. Even the special education classes got involved, they challenged themselves to see how much gum they could collect, they had over 18,000 packages of gum, let's say 1,800, 18,000 would be way too much. I have to tell you, my car smelt like spearmint for months, but there is one container there, it's upside down on its, right below the sign, that was batteries, that they collected gum and batteries, that box of batteries weighed 41 pounds. We owe them an ice cream party for as a thank you to that, but the staff actually had them stop early, because they were never going to quit, they had us come take a picture with them and deliver it, so we could stop collecting gum. And we partnered as well with the Friends of the Peoria Library, showed up at a couple of their events, they showed up at a couple of ours, this has gotten to be a really good partnership, and a lot of the hardbound books that we got in the donations, we traded them for softbound books, because they were easier to ship, anything we couldn't use, or was a little bit too well-used than the Friends of the Peoria Public Library sold at their get-togethers, but this is just another fun picture, how much stuff can you put in one SUV until you can't see well enough to drive anymore? All of us found out that we were pretty good at packing, there were eight SUVs that did deliver pickups in one day's time, and I think they made three different trips from their places to our storage place, then comes all the sorting. And this is what 240 of the first 310 boxes look like. This is the first five of the pumpkins, the city, the post office has these orange buckets that they hoard, once you send them on one of the trucks, as they go from pickup to pickup around the cities, they never get them back, everybody keeps them, so they won't let us take these off the property. This is the first five of 17 that we filled with boxes before we mailed them. George Manay has been our postal representative for all four years, and he now comes to dinner with us, we know his kids' names, he knows our kids' names, but when they leave the post office, this is dawn in the Middle East, this is the Ospreys landed, and they're unloading boxes, I've got three pictures here, but I just love the picture of the photo, of the plane, so you get to see all three of them, and the sun rose before they had the plane completely emptied, and then they start sorting, I don't know what's in that box, but he likes it. Now, that would be, if it was a scruffy little muddy puppy, that would be my look, that's what I would want in the box, and you can see in the background, the thousands of boxes that lie, arrive over there, as they sort them, Army, Marines, Naval, Air Force, they're all involved sorting. These three women obviously found a box they liked, they're behind some other barriers, crouched down, looking at photographs, and going through a box of movies that came from somewhere, I thought you'd like to see that, and then they are transported by ship. This one happens to be the Rappahack, which is a replenishment, Euler, we used to call it refueling, they call it replenishment at sea, and they are refueling the USS Boxer, which is currently deployed with the 7th Fleet, they do maritime security, but many of the boxes ended up with officers on this boat, this is one of the men, once they're now been transferred to the Boxer, they're being sorted again. So, we think our side of it is complicated, they go through three times what we do, getting these boxes to where we want them to go, they're boxed into other boxes, and transported, with all of them involved in the effort to make sure that they get to those forward operating bases. This is a huge effort that these guys volunteer their time for, this is not an assigned duty, this is, they volunteer their time to sort these packages. You can see some of the boxes don't fare real well in the course of transport, but they all make it there, boxes and boxes, and this is the Osprey over Dubai, taking off for the last time, now, we obviously can't tell you, we don't know, exactly where they go from here, but they're on their way to the forward air bases, and they took pictures of the Osprey flying over Dubai for us to see. That's the last of that CD, but there was a letter with this, and it reads, "Dear Peoria Sunset Lions Club, the holiday season is a time to reflect and be thankful for our many blessings, this time of year is also a reminder to us all that we are a free people, part of a country founded on ideals worth fighting for. Life in the military has unique challenges, the biggest challenge of all is the separation from our families, especially during the holiday season. Despite missing our loved ones at this time of year, we are focused on the task at hand. With that being said, we cannot put into words how thankful we are that you thought about us and acted by sending generous gifts for our unit. Thanks for a large part of your kindness, every single Marine and sailor in my command receives something special for the holidays. Once the packages were received, we, they were immediately distributed throughout the command to joyful, thankful, and smiling fellow Americans. One thing that makes service to our country more rewarding is the very generosity of the American people that you people exemplify. People often ask me what they can do to support and show that they appreciate the sacrifice our nation's military endures. Your act of kindness shows that you care, you are no lon, you, you no longer have to question our commitment or your commitment to support our troops. The care packages the Peoria Sunset Lions Club Foundation supplied to our squadron delivered holiday cheer to our Marines and sailors, and I'm very proud of the men and women that I have the privilege to serve with in this squadron. I tell them often that as a United States Marine or sailor, they can be proud of what they do every day. These Marines and sailors and their families sacrifice for their holidays, so that fellow Americans can enjoy theirs in safety. I'm equally proud of you and your team of volunteers, to know that our service is appreciated by fellow Americans, that we have never met makes the sacrifices worth it. On behalf of your humble, of my humble squadron that is forwardly deployed, I am grateful to you for your devotion to this great nation, have a safe and blessed holiday season and a happy new year, and it is signed Lieutenant Colonel MS, MC, Commanding Officer McDuffie." I love the name. That was one of the things that was sent to us. Another one that was sent is from Jeffrey Johnson Dean, he was another name that we found at Forward Operating Base. "On behalf of the 380th Air Expedition Wing Anti-Terrorist Office, I present you with this letter of appreciation for your care packages. The reminders of home are always a joy for us, and give us a benefit of feeling closer to our families and loved ones, though we have never truly expressed our thanks for your continued support. You remind us why we sacrifice, and why we are proud to be Americans, and why we are proud to serve." And with that comes a certificate of authenticity that says, this verifies, this flag was flown over Southeast Asian in an F-22 Raptor on January 1st, 19, 2013. It's an American flag that they flew and sent us just as a thank you. This is also a flag that we received, this is Louis Aguilar, he is home now, he was in Afghanistan over Christmas, and he called on one of our Lions and asked to meet, we all got together and had lunch together. I only showed you this picture, because I happen to know this guy standing in the middle here. Did it again. He is an Apache helicopter pilot stationed in Morana, is home now, will be deployed again before the end of the year, him and his wife and his daughter came to meet us all, brought us this flag and a certificate of appreciation. He told us a story, he's an Apache helicopter pilot, they are based where many of the Blackhawks are also based, they got so many boxes addressed to them, and they knew of several forward operating bases that no one but them knows about, so they went to the Blackhawk guys and loaded the Blackhawks, those pilots agreed to, the Apaches flew security for them, the Blackhawks took off with the packages, and they spent Christmas Day delivering to bases with only two or three people in, the boxes that Peoria had helped us send, and if that doesn't say Merry Christmas to you, nothing will. And then thank you to council especially, who is so good about helping us out, not just with the city, and letting us distribute boxes everywhere, Carl, your employees are just fantastic, it is beyond my ability to say how proud we are to live in this city. We have certificates of appreciation, obviously, for all the support the council has given us financially. Mayor Bob, thank you very much. Kathy Carlet, always, always generous with all of our causes. Bill Patina, thank you, Councilman Patina. Councilman Bill Patina and Councilman John Edwards, this is cash out of their own pockets, that's the best kind of heartwarming support. Councilman Ron Ames, thank you, and of course Carl, always, four years in a row, money out of his own pocket, besides the fact that you direct a city that we all love to belong to, and with that, I will say is a thank you, April 4th on a Friday, the Sunset Lions are grilling hamburgers at Rio Vista in Ramada, 7:00, I know it's a day off, so bring the kids or the grandkids, come fishing, lunch is on us, I will send a flyer out, so if you want to come and join us, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is certificates of appointment to board and commission members who are appointed by resolution at the March 4 meeting, I will ask Ms. Carlet, who's the chair, to join me up front.
Good evening, the city of Peoria is very fortunate and proud to have so many citizen volunteers, and first of all, I want to thank the Lions Club for everything that they do, they're a tremendous organization, but we've got some people who volunteer for boards and commissions, there's about 22 active boards and commissions in the city of Peoria right now, and some of these boards and commissions are in situations where they have to hear a lot of controversial issues sometimes, and make those decisions about those controversial issues in public, and they are courageous and intelligent, and we are very, very proud to welcome two more people to one of these boards and commissions this evening, and the first one is Bridget Binzbacher to the Planning and Zoning Commission, please come on up. Hope I didn't scare you away there. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And our next certificate of appointment is for Jeff Nelson, also for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome. Appreciate your service.
I just want to make my standard comment, we, the people who serve on boards and commissions save the city a lot of money every year, if these volunteers do not step forward and perform these duties, we would have to be paid positions, so it saves us a lot, and in return for them saving us a lot of money, we feed them dinner once a year. And I'm going to exercise a point of personal privilege here for a moment, would you come on up?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Demte Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of WHAM, the What's Happening Now! art movement, and we like to think that we're bringing unity to the Northwest community through the arts, and we are having our third annual art festival, it's coming up on March 29th and 30th, and we have invitations right here for each of you, also inviting all the citizenry of Peoria as well to join us, we have Artability, art for people with disabilities, we have dancers, we have classical musicians, we have jazz musicians, art demonstrations, it covers all the gamuts, and we'd love to invite you out, thank you very much. It is going to be on Bullard Avenue, you just go down our beautiful Grand Avenue, past a couple more cities, out in surprise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item up is the consent agenda, the consent agenda, all items are listed with a C, they've been, they're considered to be routine, or they've been reviewed by the city council, they will be enacted in one motion unless a council member asks for something to be removed. Hearing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Again, this is consent agenda, all items marked with a C, please vote, clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Regular agenda, new business, 7R, public hearing, liquor license, AZ Ice Peoria, 15829 North 83rd Avenue. This is a restaurant liquor license, Series 12, for Ice, Arizona Ice Peoria. Can I have a staff report?
Our chief financial officer Brett Manning will make a brief report.
Thank you, the properties were posted in accordance with Arizona statutes, all reviewing departments recommend approval, all fees were paid, and no comments were received from the public.
Thank you very much, at this point in time, I'm going to open a public hearing, this is a public hearing on the AZ Ice Peoria application for Series 12 liquor license, would anyone in the audience care to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
No. I got, I had a request.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, it says a new license, didn't they already have a license, or is this a new business there?
New owner.
It's a new owner, huh, but the same, keeping the same name?
I think it's actually a slightly different.
Slightly different name, okay, thank you.
Because currently it's Polar Ice, it's going to be AZ Ice.
AZ, okay.
Could I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Mr. Edwards, move, seconded by Mr. Ames. Once again, this is a new restaurant liquor license, Series 12, for AZ Ice Peoria at 15829 North 83rd Avenue, please vote, clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Next is 8R, contract amendment, Quest Civil Constructors, Waterline Replacements, 71st Avenue and Cherry Hills Drive.
Our Public Works and Utilities Director, Bill Manning, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to bring this item before you, this is a project to replace an existing six-inch water line in the vicinity of 71st Avenue, just south of Cactus. This area has been the subject, we've had a number of water line breaks in this area. These water lines were installed in the mid-'80s, they used a material, it was a PVC, polyvinyl chloride pipe, that pipe was, when it was installed, commonly installed throughout the valley, but the installation of this pipe was very critical, you had to properly bed it, you had to properly backfill it, you didn't put large rocks on there, which was unfortunately the practice at that time, and that's what has caused a number of breaks in this area. So this is the beginning of a program that we have initiated in the department to identify these areas and begin to replace one to two miles of pipeline per year. We're going to replace it with a new ductile iron water line, that's a much more substantial pipe, and of course, we're going to bed it properly, backfill it properly, and make sure it's got good inspection as it goes in. The specific project limits are Laurel Lane from 69th Avenue to 71st Avenue, Laurel Lane is three blocks south of Cactus, Cherry Hills Drive from 69th to 74th Avenue, which is four blocks south of Cactus. The construction will be completed by Quest Civil Constructors, about one mile of pipe is what we're talking about here, we are also going, they would start work in April and be complete by September, it would be, would be about a six-month timeframe. The work would also include some public outreach and coordination, and this would be provided by another company called Central Creative. Quest Civil Constructors has already performed the design and pre-construction services, they're ready to go with the approval of this, this contract. The construction amount is $1,045,177, we have public outreach for $12,669, for a total amount of $1,057,846. The staff recommendation is to approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $1,057,846, and authorize a change order to the construction phase, for the construction phase, they've already completed the design phase, to Quest Civil Constructors, and use an existing on-call contract for Central Creative for public outreach and coordination during the construction. That concludes my presentation, I'd be pleased to take any questions.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, I'm very happy that we're finally addressing this, I know we've had several bursts of pipes, and affected some homes, one home twice had burst on them, and it definitely needs to be corrected, and is this going to be, go to other streets around this area too, or is this really the kind of epicenter of where this problem is?
Vice Mayor Ames, this will continue over the next few years, you'll see that when we do our presentation on the capital improvement program, that we have kind of two areas of town, one is this one that we're talking about here, between Cactus and about a half-mile south, and then between basically 71st and 67th Avenue, that seems to be kind of a hotspot for this, for this particular problem. The other area is also by Bell Road north, it's actually north of the car dealerships in the vicinity of 89th Avenue, we've seen the same kind of problem there, that probably, that pipeline in both areas were installed about the same time, so they're using the same construction techniques and the same materials, this is no longer permitted in the city, we all use ductile iron pipe for everything on the, on the water system these days.
Okay, and it's going to take, what'd you say, like six months to do it? Are you going to do it in segments and close off certain streets for a certain amount of time, and work with the citizens in those homes, right?
Right, that's why we have the public outreach company there, they'll staff a hotline, we'll do a lot of public outreach, but we won't be able to close the streets, because we've got homes that front directly on this, this pipeline, so this is a residential area, so we're going, it's going to be, it's going to be somewhat disruptive, but we won't close the roads.
Okay, so you'll drag people in and out when you really need to?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Okay, other questions? Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved, moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Patana, this is 8R, contract amendment, Quest Civil Constructors, Waterline Replacements, 71st Avenue and Cherry Hills Drive, please vote, clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Next is the call to the public, and we do have three requests to speak, the first, and I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name, Russ Warner? You have three minutes.
Counsel, thank you, I initially had requested to speak in response to your special study session regarding the annexation of the, what you refer to as the Pinnacle Peak area. One of the things that I was just curious on, I'm not able to get any records from Real Metro, they tell me they're a private corporation, so they don't have any public records requests, does the city currently have a contract, or is it a verbal agreement? And I know Chief spoke something about an IGA, so I was just curious if there's a current contract with the city, and, and...
Let me pause right there, we can't respond to you, because this was not an agenda-sized item?
Sure.
Get together with the chief after the, after the meeting, and...
I'll just state my...
He can answer your questions.
My questions and, and concerns, I was just curious too, how much of Peoria citizens' taxpayer money currently is being spent on this opposition for us County Island residents to form a fire district? You guys have attempted annexation up in that area, and it has not been popular with the majority of the residents, so how much of their money are you currently spending to strong-arm us into a annexation, or not have any fire protection? There was a fire up there on 87th Avenue, I don't know the exact timeframe, within the last 18 months, two years, Peoria and Glendale units responded and put that fire out, so you're currently providing protection for that county island, and you're footing the bill for it. Real Metro sent that home on our bill for $6,000, I'm curious if the city sent Real Metro a bill and got reimbursed for it. Us County Island residents, we spend money in the city of Peoria, there's not any facilities up there, there's no restaurants, grocery stores, shopping centers, big box stores, gas stations, we buy our vehicles in the city of Peoria, you do get our tax revenue in some form or another. One of the other things that was mentioned before that was inaccurate, that section of Pinnacle Peak Road that you claim was annexed by the fire district, actually, they annexed the, the public land adjacent to that roadway, they're not in the business of annexing Sun City West Fire, I spoke with the, the chief and the assistant chief, and they have offered to the city to pay you back for calls you respond in our county island. Our, currently, our, our Real Metro fire station that responds up there is at the 303 in Olive, that's by far further away than any of the Sun City stations that are mentioned. Also, what was failed to be mentioned on the map is, Sun City has a station at 99th Avenue and Bell Road, that's just as close timewise as your Peoria stations within a few minutes. This is a human life and safety issue, this shouldn't be dirty politics. I don't understand that the House Bill 2152, if you're telling me that Sun City West can't come in and annex away from areas that you've drawn your magic crown around, your crayon around, and said you're going to annex us in the future, when you haven't annexed us in the last 15, 20 years, and you guys go move in on their territory all the time, and just say, we're going to take your fire district away and annex you into a city without their permission, so it does go both ways.
May I ask you to conclude your remarks, your time is up.
Absolutely, I have, from the city of Phoenix Regional Dispatch Center, I don't have stats for 2012, I have stats that go back from 2012 to 2009, on average, Peoria receives aids, aid from neighboring cities to the, to the tune of about double what they, what they put out, so, this mutual automated aid system goes both ways, and Peoria receives almost double what you guys... And Peoria receives almost double what you guys render to neighboring agencies. And in honesty, Peoria is going to respond to about 30 calls a year. That's all Royal Metro has responded up there, is about 30 calls a year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrew Marwick?
Hello, Andrew Marwick. I'm a Phoenix resident. Just had some comments. I came here to see how Peoria was run in comparison to a neighboring city between Phoenix and Peoria. That city is made, it's a little more exciting to go to their council meetings, even to watch them on the internet. Glendale is, puts on quite a show. A lot of the things Glendale does has an impact on its neighbors. Their financial condition is a threat. I mean, they're headed on a path towards bankruptcy. Their services are declining. They have the potential to become Detroit 2.0. They're in denial of that, but... Some of the things that they've done are the billboards. Steve Elman came up to the city of Glendale about 10 years ago with his proposal for all kinds of billboards at Westgate. Now the area around Bethany Home in Glendale is about five or six billboards in that area. And a billboard company has decided to put some up near Bell Road. Hopefully, they will stop and that extend into Peoria or North Glendale. The Glendale City Council has been kicking that around for a while. I live near a freeway in Phoenix, and I don't want to see billboards popping up. And if Glendale gives in, it's going to start spreading other places. I don't know if Glendale has the guts, their city council doesn't seem to have the guts over there to say no to Becker and Roselaw Group. Another problem that they have that's a strain on Peoria and Phoenix is their fire truck. The age of their fire trucks, the utilization, the number of responses they go to. How long, we just had a discussion here about fire service. They have nothing in their budget for the next five years, as far as I can tell, for replacing their aging fire trucks. I mean, that's going, if their trucks aren't responding, that puts a strain on Peoria and Phoenix's resources along with their increased calls. One of the council members last year, Joyce Clark, was concerned that they couldn't loan equipment to the state in case of a wildfire because of the condition of their equipment, and that was over a year ago. There's constant, their capital improvement program, almost everything, if you go through it, it's everything is zeroed out for the next five years. No parks. Today, we're discussing putting an archery range in Hero's Park at 83rd and Bethany. $50,000 to pile some dirt up so that they can have, some private company can put in an archery range instead of all the things they were proposing there. But they have $45 million for a parking garage for Bill Bidwell and the Cardinals in their capital improvement. And finally, today, it was almost surreal, I was at their workshop today, and you can watch it on their website. They finally, four to three, decided to oppose Trent Franks' efforts in Congress to stop the casino. Gary Sherwood, council member, they had three to three a deadlock, and then they went over to Gary Sherwood, Council Member Sherwood, for discussion. And he broke the logjam and said, "I'm opposed to Trent Franks. Let's negotiate with them." So it looks like after five years of ostrich with its head in the sand, they're finally coming around on that issue. So just a little update on the neighbor over here, how things are going. But Peoria is a much better-run city, just as Phoenix is, and maybe someday there'll be a little change over there.
Thank you very much. All right. Next is reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. A couple of reports that I have, and one of them is a brief presentation by the fire department. So Deputy Chief Stacy Irvine and Chief Reese are coming down. While they're doing that, let me remind the council and our viewers of our upcoming fifth annual P-83 party that's occurring this Saturday, March 22nd, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM out on 83rd Avenue, just outside of the sports complex. And this P-83 party is going to be headlined by Dustin Lynch. And I'm sure Councilmember Edwards is going to be speaking to this under his report. And you have some mugs and other paraphernalia in front of you that I know that the council member will be pointing to. But this is really an exciting event, and it's, it's putting that P-83 business district on the map in, in a whole different way than, than shopping and sports and entertainment. And that is to really be a party location, a chance to have a, a city celebration out there. So we'll be talking more about that later, I'm sure. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Reese. This presentation is regarding our emergency preparedness. It's been some time since we have had a briefing on emergency preparedness. And it's one of those subjects that's often easy to kind of fall off the bottom of a busy agenda. But when there is an emergency, when there's a, a natural disaster or, or a man-made disaster or crisis or, or emergency that we need to respond to, when that happens, there's nothing more important than the city's preparedness for, for an emergency. And so while we're not talking with the council about this regularly, it is something that we work on regularly across our department, departments of the city to make sure that if there is an emergency or a disaster, that we're prepared to respond. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Reese, who will, I think, turn it over to Deputy Chief Irvine.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Mayor and council, thank you very much for allowing us to present. Chief Irvine will give you the bulk of the, the presentation. Here is the old guy and designated historian. The whole management system, if you can think back for some of us that are of that age, goes back, dates back to the 50s where you had the civil defense that started all when, when we still had the Cold War. And we would practice going under our desks for nuclear disasters. And if you can recall, on Saturdays, the local fire departments would, would sound the civil defense sirens that were deafening throughout the neighbor, neighborhoods. In, in 1968, a group of fire chiefs from mainly California and Arizona gathered in, in Phoenix, Arizona to tackle an issue of how to manage chaos during the wildland fires that mainly in California and some in Cali, in Arizona. And out of that, that group, there were two factions. And the California contingency, out of that created the, what is kind of referred to today as Incident Command System. And what they did was they used the US Navy models and hierarchy org charts and started to create what we see today in, in Incident Command. The other individual that was involved, very involved in that meeting was a local, very known fire chief, Alan Brunisini, my former fire chief and mentor of mine. And out of that, he created Fire Ground Command for urban firefighting, structured firefighting. And so those two groups went kind of separate ways. But they also started to come together to create a bigger system on, on managing local emergencies. Then 1978, the, which is becoming the modern emergency management system, came out of the National Governors Association and later on formed the Federal Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as FEMA. It wasn't until 2001, during the, the attacks at September 11th in, in New York and the Twin Towers, that the, the federal government put together an, an agency to address those emergency. And out of that came the Department of Homeland Security. Later Katrina, the hurricane, big hurricane in New Orleans in the year 2005 led to the renewed role of local emergency management and started to form what we know today as the modern emergency management and EOCs, the Emergency Operations Centers within local jurisdictions. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Irvine to give you the update of where we are, we are today.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, Council. Just while you guys were in the executive council, I dropped some of these off in front of your monitors there. And what this is in the, in this presentation here, it also includes a white paper written by our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, Glenn Jones, is in the front of this. And in the back is a copy of the presentation from tonight. The white paper that Glenn wrote goes into more depth and detail about what EOCs and emergency management is all about. So that's for your, for your future reading. But since you also have a copy of the presentation, some of these slides that I'll be talking about, I'll kind of just gloss over a little bit, but hit the highlights. So, the city throughout the decades has had the city code and city charter and has addressed the need for emergency management. As you can see, the city code in 77, Chapter 7 addresses civil emergencies and emergency services in a couple of different sections of that chapter. In the city charter, one of the things it addresses is the duties of the mayor. And there's much more to this, to this article than what's there. But I pulled out some of the, what I consider the highlights is, and remember them reading as verbatim. "He shall be recognized as head of all the city government for all purposes. In addition thereto, the mayor shall govern the city by proclamation during times of riot, civil insurrection, major disaster, and times of great public danger." What the city did next was take the next logical step to become more involved in emergency management. And I know the mayor was back there. I was lucky enough to attend, as were some of the people behind me in the audience tonight. But the city of Peoria was invited back to the Emergency Management Institute in Emmitsburg, Maryland to participate in a simulated disaster drill involving all city departments. The drill also included many outside agencies. And they were Peoria Unified School District, Deer Valley School District, APS, SRP, Red Cross, Arrowhead Hospital, and Thunderbird Hospital, to name a few. We had over 60 Peoria personnel attend this training back in Emmitsburg. In my opinion, it was a great drill. It was an excellent effort and result by all those back there. We got many kudos from the organization back there. I believe the staff, for the most part, was very pleased with how things went. And once again, in my opinion, it was a great team-building effort for the city and the staff here in the city. One of the recommendations from this exercise was to recreate the position of Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for the city of Peoria. This was done in fiscal year '08, and that person was Glenn Jones, and he is still here with us in the city. One of the many things that, that Glenn was tasked with was updating or creating our emergency preparedness plans. There are required plans, and there are optional plans. The ones on the left are the required plans, and they have all been completed. Emergency operation, hazard mitigation, our dam response plan to those dams that would affect the city of Peoria if they were ever to fail. Waddell, New River, Adobe, and Cave Buttes. In addition, there are optional plans that are recommended. The Wildlife Fire Protection Plan has been completed. Our Continuity of Operations Plan is currently being revised. The Recovery Plan, which is what happens after a major disaster and how the city would recover, is currently being developed. He has completed our pandemic plan and our flood response plan. And just as a follow-up, all of those are available online on the city's website. So if we do have an emergency, and one of the things that we're lucky about living in this area is not much happens. So sometimes you take these, these EOC operations a little bit for granted, but when you need them, you really need them. So if we need to activate, what do we do? I'm sorry. When? Can be activated when an emergency reaches such proportions that it requires a closely coordinated effort on the part of leading city officials. The city's emergency response personnel, and in this case, be the first responders and public workspeople, will take necessary actions to control a limited emergency occurring within the city. When conditions of a local emergency disaster are present imminent and a need for outside assistance can be anticipated, requests will be made through the county. And that's kind of how things work, is we need help, we go to the county. If it needs to be made larger than that, then it goes through the state, and the state goes through the feds. Here is a list of individuals that are authorized to activate the EOC in times of emergencies. And we should find one of those people here in the city available pretty much all the time, so. And here's stuff that is available in the back of the presentation, in the pamphlet that I gave you. But here are some of the activation levels for the EOC. Fully activated, and that's when we would have everybody working in this EOC, filling every seat that we have identified. Then we have partial activations and limited activations, which would require fewer people. And we also have standby mode. And one of the things that we can do with activating the EOC, and even in standby mode or a partial mode, is we could set it up for times when, say, the Super Bowl is in town, and we would just want to be prepared in case something does happen. At least it's set up and it's ready, and we can always call people to come in and, and staff it as needed. Here is our EOC org chart as we would have it fully staffed. And as you look down the different sections that we've identified, you will see that almost every department in the city is, is participating in this. And once again, we've got copies of this in the handout I gave you earlier. And we'll get to the responsibilities of Mayor, Council, and the City Manager. The mayor is responsible by law for directing and controlling disaster operations. The mayor or his/her designee will proclaim local emergencies as defined in the Arizona revised statute. When outside assistance is required, it will be requested and used only as an adjunct to existing, existing city services. The declaration of an emergency. When a local emergency is proclaimed, the mayor is authorized by city charter and ARS to govern by proclamation. The mayor's authority include, but are not limited to, imposing curfews, ordering the closing of any businesses, calling upon regular and auxiliary law enforcement agencies, requesting mutual aid, and committing local resources. Council. One of the things that we would be asking the council members to is to be the, the voice of their constituents. We would ask you to go out to your districts, talk to your people, talk to your, to your constituents, and come back and let us know what their needs and wants are. If we are fully activating the EOC, one of the things that we would do is create the liaison position, which we would try to assign one of the deputy C managers to the council as the liaison between the council members and the Emergency Operations Center. City Manager acts as the chief advisor to the mayor during disaster operations and is responsible for the direct management activities necessary to the operation. Now, there is some potential training available for elected officials. Now, there's a long course description there, and like I said, it's, it's included in the, the handout that I gave you earlier. But these are all at the state level. Senior officials workshop for all hazard preparedness. It's a six-hour class. There's a crisis leadership and decision-making for elected officials. It's a four-hour class. And an Incident Command System overview for executives and senior officials. It's a four-hour class. Those are all available at the state level that we can put on here locally, if so choose. And there's also the option of Emmitsburg. So if, if, if the next mayor, which I think this is kind of where we're going with this, chooses to go down that road, it's something that we can apply for. It's, it's never a given. You, you put your name in the hat with all the other communities and, and hopefully you get chosen. But that also may be an option for future training. And some final comments. The EOC takes about 30 minutes to set up. Once we page out and get the onsite EOC setup team there, it takes about 30 minutes. If anybody believes that the EOC will need to be set up, all we ask is just let us know as early as possible. That way, we can make all the, all the necessary phone calls, get people in, and set it up. And like I said earlier, the EOC can be set up to assist with event, with event management, including the Fourth of July festivities, P-83, Super Bowl, events of that size. So that is all that we have tonight on that. If there's any questions, any thoughts, any concerns, any ideas, I'd be glad to hear them.
Thank you. Questions, comments? I, I would just urge, I would urge the city to get in line at Emmitsburg now. I mean, because there's going to be a new mayor come January. There's going to be new council members come January. A lot of the staff that are here now weren't here when we went through Emmitsburg. I know it takes a while before you, you get in line and before you, you're finally selected. I know it takes a while before you get in line and before you're finally selected. So I think the sooner we apply, the better. And I would strongly urge you to do that. It's a great, it's a great course. It's hard, it's difficult, it takes a lot out of you, but it's worth it, I think, for the city and for safety reasons.
Well, we'll start doing our homework and get with the city manager and give him what the possible timelines and thoughts on that.
Yeah, and I've had most of the ICS classes because, through CAP, because my position at Central Arizona Project. I'd also recommend that council members take those classes. They're not difficult, they're interesting, you'll come away with a feeling exactly how things are supposed to operate during an emergency and what your role is within that, within the operations. It'd be very good to do.
Well, if there's any questions or thoughts or ideas, Chief Reese, myself, and Glenn Jones, who's here in the audience, you may make contact by phone or email at any time.
Questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one final thing, not on the agenda, but just kind of a nice tradition that I'd call some attention to. There was a presentation at the beginning of this meeting about the generosity of the community for our servicemen overseas, and it highlights the partnership that we have with Luke Air Force Base. And certainly, the council, from your policy direction, has always maintained a great partnership with Luke Air Force Base. And one tradition that doesn't get much attention, and probably should, happened yesterday at one of our spring training baseball games. And that is a hosting that the city of Peoria provides for the Singapore Air Force. The Singapore Air Force trains at Luke Air Force Base, and those pilots are here each year in March, training. And a nice tradition that we have is to have them out to the ballgame, and they can experience some U.S. traditions while they're here training. And it was a great day again yesterday, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from the council. We'll start with you, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I was very fortunate enough to attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, D.C. I believe that we'll be doing a presentation in the future, and I attended with six other Peoria students, along with some council members. So without spoiling the presentation, and I'll let them elaborate more, but I'd like to say it was a great opportunity. We met with Representative Trent Franks, Senators McCain and Flake, and we discussed policies that will be affecting Peoria in the future. So it was great insight on how our federal government is run and how it impacts Peoria. So I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I was going to have a, say a couple of words on one item, but the city manager beat me to it. But I was there at the Singapore, it's great. I go every year, and it's, you meet all these new flyers. Every two years, they change over. So anyway, the city manager, I would explain that to you, so I won't have to. And I, yes, I was in Washington, and these kids did a great job. Of course, I didn't meet with Franks or anybody else, but I did meet with Christine, Kristen Simmons at the Capitol, and she was just great. The other thing I want to say is that, don't forget, every Saturday at nine o'clock until two, at Park West, they have the organic market. Come on down and buy some fresh fruit and vegetables, and they have a lot of vendors there, and I'm sure that you'll like it, you can also go shopping there. The first Thursday every month, at Fresh Start, at the church on 83rd Avenue, and they give out vegetables, fruit, pastry, and it's all free. You can take one or two boxes home with your three boxes, but it's just great. So come on down and get some free fruit and vegetables and pastry. So that was the saddest thing I ever did, wasn't it, Mayor? Thank you, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to say that arts are alive and well in the city of Peoria, and thank MJ for doing that little presentation. She is part of a very, very large and robust group of citizens who participate in and support the arts in Peoria. And there's a couple items that are happening in that regard, and one of them is the West Valley Art Museum, which operates here in City Hall, is getting ready to do their final wrap-up of their baseball memorabilia exhibit, Thursday, March 27th. So you should really come down and see this exhibit, it's fabulous and perfect for this time of year when we're doing everything baseball. And speaking of everything baseball, Theater Works, our community theater here in downtown Peoria, was playing the National Pastime, a really great play about the history of baseball, and it was quite entertaining and funny. So that was really worth seeing, and it is still playing there. So I really suggest that everybody go take a look at that. And then, as MJ said, there's going to be an arts and cultural festival, and another one on Saturday, April 5th, in Old Town Peoria. So lots of things to get you outside, to get you involved in the arts, and get you involved in the community of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, like Councilman Leone and Councilman Patena, I attended the National League of Cities in D.C. last week with seven of the youth advisory members. And Thomas, I don't want to steal any of the thunder, but I will tell you that the seven individuals that represented Peoria did an absolute phenomenal job in representing themselves, the citizens, and the youth of Peoria. They met with Senator McCain, Senator Flake, Representative Trent Franks. They were asking questions that, to be quite honest, were very surprising to me, and they were getting very thoughtful responses, and very surprising that Mr. Franks was so surprised at the questions that they were asking. So hats off to the two of you and to the seven other individuals. On Saturday, I attended the Luke Days out at the Luke Air Force Base, and got to watch the new F-35 fly around. About 200,000 people were in attendance, it was a phenomenal experience. And I know that Councilman Patena is probably going to talk a little bit more about it, but it was just a great experience. And then finally, as Mr. Swenson alluded to, is this coming Saturday is our fifth annual P-83 party, and I just encourage everybody to come out. This is our signature event in the Willow District. We have Dustin Lynch is an up-and-coming performer, he is going to be headlining it. We're going to have food trucks, live music. We have local vendors, beer, wine. We have a kid zone for the kids, we have local vendors that are selling some of their goods. And for all my council member friends here, I have given you a couple of tickets, VIP tickets, along with a commemorative mug. Please come out and join us. I think it's going to be a great time. Starts at three o'clock, right after the baseball game. If you do have spring training tickets, you can bring your ticket stub, and that gets you into the event free of charge. So if you've gone to any spring training event this year, you can bring in your old ticket, and you will get into the event free. So again, you can go out to p83.com, or p83az.com, to get more information about the events, the vendors, and the timelines of when the certain events are going to be happening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. I hate to sound like a broken record here, but I was also able to go to Washington, D.C., had an amazing time. Like Councilman Edwards pointed out, we had an amazing group of young people that were able to go. They all asked insightful questions. It's hard for me to say I was impressed with all of them, because I was one of them, but I think we did an amazing job. I think it's safe to say that some of the students there were also maybe doing some property shopping, seeing what's out in D.C., because I'm sure they'll end up there one day. Beyond that, I mean, it was a great experience, and it was my first time in D.C., got to do the tourist thing, but also got to experience more of the real Washington, D.C., where politics happen and where decisions are made. Other than that, bringing it back to Peoria, an Oakwood Elementary student is being recognized this Wednesday for earning a perfect score on the Explorer Test. Eighth grader Christopher Smith is one of only 53 students in Arizona out of over 40,000 participants to actually achieve a perfect score on the test, so congratulations to him.
Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. I too had the opportunity to attend the National League of Cities in Washington. John Shell put together a very energetic calendar for us, we were kept very busy. It was very enjoyable, it was my first one, being able to talk to other elected officials throughout the country about common themes that we have in our cities, and what they did to resolve issues and develop new things for their cities. So that was really good. The highlight of my trip, I got to go to the Pentagon and visit with a rear admiral and two generals. And the common theme from them was, they talked specifically about the F-35 and what that means to the West Valley and the entire valley in general. And the one thing they talked about, a couple of things they talked about, was how Arizona is recognized for embracing their military and how people actually like to serve at Luke. And also, the role the West Valley played in making sure that we got the F-35 here. That really has hit all the way to Washington, the coalition that was put together in the valley to keep the F-35 here at Luke, or to get the F-35 here at Luke. So that was a real big deal to them. We will have, for the next several decades, air superiority because of the F-35. And again, some of the things that the military, high-ranking military, talked about was what that means for the West Valley for the next several decades, and that is that financially, there's going to be 144 F-35s coming to Luke, and it's going to keep them busy, they're going to keep bringing military people in, and everybody knows it's such an economic engine for the West Valley, so we're going to be in pretty good shape for the next few decades. I also had the privilege of sitting in for the mayor at the F-35 rollout on Friday. There was about 500 people there, it was an exciting event. The aircraft is just amazing to see, and I also watched it fly over. The governor was there, Trent Franks was there, and there was a four-star general that all made speeches. And again, a common theme was what the West Valley did to make sure that the F-35 was able to come to Luke Air Base. So some of those things I get to do are privileges of being in this position, and I was very grateful to be able to go to Washington and very grateful to sit in for the mayor at the F-35 rollout. And one last thing, our Peoria Sports Complex has been here for 20 years, and on my bucket list for 20 years has been to throw out the first pitch. And I never was able to do that, and Councilman Edwards set it up for me, that I was able to throw out the first pitch a couple of weeks ago, and so I can take that off my bucket list now, but it was very exciting, and I actually threw a strike, so I was very proud about that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Yeah, I think a lot of things have been said about the different events since our last council meeting. One that wasn't mentioned, and a few other council members aware of there, the Friends of the Library had a function at Sunrise Library, it was an evening function, very nice, and we're signing up more members for the Friends of the Library, so it's a volunteer group. And they do an excellent job, and we know libraries are important, reading, and we're up to date in our libraries, you know, regular book reading, electronic reading, and keeping right up with the latest trends and having libraries that really reach people. I've been out in neighborhoods quite a bit the last few weeks, and I know some people on staff here, I come back with, the citizens say there's cracks in our road, and I have to say that these things are addressed quite quickly by the staff, so that's good, and I enjoy that, and enjoy getting out and meeting with citizens.
Thank you. Not to beat anything to death, but I want to point out what's been going on at the sports complex. I mean, the first game of the year, thanks to Bridget and the Diamond Club, is the charity game. That benefits children, children's sports around the Peoria area, they do a very good job. I was there, it was a wonderful event. The other big one was obviously Singapore Squadron Day that we had on St. Patrick's Day, no connection there. The reason that Singapore is here, I went with the Air Force when they renewed the training contract in Singapore, I don't know, six years ago. And the reason Singapore is here is because when they take off from their base, they have to pull hard Gs to get out over the ocean, otherwise they overflow, overfly Malaysia. If you look at a map, they're all very close together. So they need areas where they can train, and they need areas where they can train overground for bombing runs and things like that. That's why they're at Luke Air Force Base. Now, their contract with the United States is with the F-16. Now, I don't know whether they're going to get the 35 or not, but in talking to the Air Force, U.S. Air Force Colonel, who's heading the program for the Singapore Squadron, the F-35 is a weapons, well, I was told in D.C. years ago, the F-35 would be a weapons platform for 40 years. And the Colonel told me on Monday that they're now, the Air Force is now looking at it as being a weapons platform for 50 years. So if we have done nothing else with all the efforts by all the West Valley cities, we have preserved Luke Air Force Base for a long time, and I think that's really worth noting. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
So that's the way it is?